Paul, do you want to leave us in the White John Sheriff? Thank you. Roll call.
Jenny David. Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy.
Present.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Serber.
Here.
Approve of the agenda. Commissioners, any additions or corrections?
I have no. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Declarations of conflicts of interest. Any Commissioners?
None.
I have none.
Review of minutes. August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes.
I have to write them. I'll make a motion to approve them as accepted. It's part.
Motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four B, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, closed session meeting minutes.
Make the motion to accept them.
Motion, Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serber. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four C, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Take your motion, we accept them, please.
Motion, Commissioner Wiltsy.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serber. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four D, August twenty, excuse me, uh, four C, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Oh, I already did that one.
You weren't heard.
August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, closed session meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Serber, support for Mayhew. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment and agenda item matters only. Any public comment in the room? Come on up. You know the rules, ma'am? I can't.
I was invited guests, uh, to the MTA meeting, and there was conversations about having a full-time animal control officer. And I agree with that. I think if you want to find somebody that's going to stay, be a good animal control officer, you really should have a full-time animal control officer. And I know that Commissioner Wiltsy alluded to that Tuesday night at the MTA meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any further public, any public comment in the room? On agenda items only. Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, correspondence from Kellamasou County related to the opposition to MDHHS competitive procurement process for prepared health plans that has been received and filed. Item seven, public hearing fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for citizens to provide input associated pending decisions of the Board of Commissioners regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Public comments about the proposed budget will be heard as required by the Budget Hearing of Local Government Act. Established rules for public comment will apply. Is there any public comment? Do we need to, we need to go into a public hearing? We need a motion to go into a public hearing?
Motion to go into a public hearing on fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget.
Or? Motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in public, public hearing. Any comments? Anybody in the room want to say anything? About our budget? Anybody on the phone?
I'll make the motion to adjourn the public hearings. Support.
Motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serber to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Uh, Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Mark Serber.
Yes.
Item eight, consent agenda. I don't see why we can't.
I'll make a motion to consent the fire agenda. Support.
Motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serber. These are items eight through F. Item eight A, resolution to approve a discrepatory, discrepatory action grievance policy. Item eight D, resolution to approve a limited English proficiency policy. Eight C, resolution to approve OGMAC Transit Department policies. Eight D, resolution to authorize entry of participation agreements in partial settlement of the National Prescription Opiate Litigation, Purdue versus Stackler settlement. Eight E, resolution to authorize entry of participation agreements in partial settlement of the National Prescription Opiate Litigation, Generic Manufacturer settlement. Eight F, resolution to authorize entry of state subdivision agreements concerning allocation of opiate settlement funds. We have a motion with support. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Mark Serber.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item eight, new business, eight A, Jeff Nichols.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, I'm looking at nine. Nine, new business. Jeff Nichols, Veterans Affairs Director's Procurement Card Activation. Tim, do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure. We had a situation not too long ago where our Veterans Affairs Director had a charge on the procurement card that was not allowed under our policy. So in following with the next steps, the treasurer suspended that card pending your approval to reinstate it. The charge was very small. It was under twenty-five dollars. It was an inadvertent charge for a lunch that shouldn't have been on that card. Uh, so we've, and now we have Jeff here tonight to request that you reinstate that card.
Hi, Jeff, you want to go ahead and you have the floor?
Yes, I just, um, unfortunately, I, I had the card in my pot, in my wallet after a purchase for a veteran's food card. It looks exactly like my own card, and I pulled it out at Taco Bell, paid for myself and Jared's lunch. And a month later, when the statement came in, didn't even realize I did it. Um, I brought it to Karen's attention, and then she let Tim know. I apologize for it. It was an inadvertent accident. I didn't mean to do it. Um, but, uh, we are requesting that we get the card reinstated. Um, I've already had a veteran come in, and I couldn't help him out with a food purchase from either Walmart or Myers because it's the only way we can actually purchase food cards now is via the credit card because we don't have, they haven't been able to set up a purchase order program for us like we had with Save-A-Lot and Family Fair before. So we're in a situation right now where it's, it's not just affecting our office, it's affecting our veterans who, uh, we use it to support. Um, we also have some major purchases coming up for the grant that the credit card will be used for. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to come to Tim for some of the larger grants. That's the main reason for it. Again, I apologize for it. It was an inadvertent charge. And we are just requesting that it be reinstated.
Any questions for Jeff?
I'd make a motion that the card be reinstated.
Motion, Commissioner Serber, support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Comments, questions, Commissioners?
Sneak that happen.
Yeah, we'll avert a court martial.
Roll call vote.
Uh, Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Mark Serber.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Item nine B, we have nine B, I, and nine B, I, ninety-one and ninety-two, District Health Department related to annual report in District Health Department related to increased appropriations request. Hi, good evening.
I'm presenting our annual report. Could we approach the board?
Come on up.
My name is Helen Borisin, I'm Director of Nursing at District Health Department Number Two. Um, Dr. Huvai is our medical director, and Denise Bryan is our health officer. They were not able to be here this evening. But I have Tony Spieyer, our finding director, and Condesha, our administrative director. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to present our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual report. I'm honored to speak on behalf of our department in the dedicated staff that work tirelessly to uphold the health of the residents of our four counties. Alcona, Iosco, Ogumah, and Ascot, Ascota Counties. Um, as you can see on page three of the annual report, our mission is to provide leadership in promoting environmental and personal health, your health promotion, disease detection, and disease prevention, education, and regulation. Um, throughout the report, you can see highlighted services in the past year that mission has guided us through new challenges, ongoing public health needs, and significant community health outreach. Uh, we provide a broad perspective of services. We have clinical services such as immunization, family planning, clinical disease surveillance, oral health, health education, caring ambition, WIC, Environmental Health Division is a vital part of our operation with compliance with septic, wells, and food safety. Um, we're coming to the day because I got the privilege of serving for District Two for eight years, and throughout that time, our work has been guided by a strong commitment to supporting vulnerable families and connecting them to essential services. When the COVID-nineteen pandemic hit, District Two rose to the occasion only because of the relationships we've had in the community. We were able to continue our services despite the pandemic efforts, and because of that, we did receive additional funding. Um, but as you're aware, there is ongoing federal scrutiny on CDC funding, and in Lansing, we are still operating without our basic approved budget yet. So the health officer and medical director made it clear that we are a back-to-basis health department. But that does not diminish the significance and value of the services that we provide here through our agency and to the residents of Ogumah.
Hey.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tony Spieyer. I've worked with the whole department since last year, finance director role. Many years of experience in public traded companies, not so much in public health or public venues. So apologize if I step out of turn here, but keep you on a guard leash.
You're good.
You know, this is, unfortunately, due to some of the political changes, we are funding state flattery. What we've tried to do is, in history, is pinch our pennies, do the best we can to find official funding sources. Unfortunately, at this time, funding sources outside of, so we are asking for a ten percent increase for funding, going from one twenty-nine, five eighty-eight, up to forty-two, five forty-seven, a little bit of history on our county appropriations. We haven't asked for an increase since two thousand eighteen. Um, right, wrong, or indifferent, I wasn't here. I don't think I would have let it go that long. That's quite a long time to try to maintain it in your own. We've been able to do that without asking any extra burden from the county, but it's getting tough and tougher. Kind of put it in perspective, in two thousand eighteen, three percent of the appropriations that we received, or I'm sorry, restate that, the hundred twenty-nine thousand five eighty-eight represented three percent of our operating. For twenty twenty-five, that would, that would represent two point five percent. So there has been a drop down in total support from a percentage standpoint while we've been able to find those funding sources. So had that funding source been flat at three percent, the rate would be about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for total appropriations for the county's work. Um, kind of put that in perspective as to what's happened for us in the world since two thousand eighteen, our wages have went up forty-two percent. Um, we needed to have been able to pay people wages through, to maintain skill sets of people that we need to do the work that we, you know, that is important for the, for the district and for the counties. Healthcare costs have went up forty-seven percent. It's skyrocketing. It's just one of those things that's a necessary evil, and unfortunately, it, it costs significantly. Our travel rate, because our, we do travel throughout the county, throughout the districts, you know, that's, that has went up twenty-eight percent from fifty-four cents a mile to almost seventy cents a mile. So we've seen some pressures going up, and then just general cost pressures, the CPI index is up thirty-four percent since two thousand eighteen. So significant double-digit increases in expenses while being with the whole appropriations. But I think that they've done a good job of considering pennies and keeping things in line, what they can do. Unfortunately, you know, so far before we touch get too deep, it will certainly affect some services. We don't want to give out that route, but we also need money to survive and maintain the service levels that we do. Is there any questions specifically related to finance from any Commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioner Wiltsy?
Um, thank you guys for being here. There's too a lot of important stuff, so thank you. Um, so we're one of four counties. I imagine you've gone, have you gone to the other counties already?
To all the other counties, you're, the way the banking order was is just the, the meeting here was the last meeting.
Have those other four counties made any decisions on the increase?
Iosco has said they will give us three percent. Ascoda and Alcona have said they would go up to ten percent, but they're going to max out at what? The highest level the other town went to. So three percent is the, what they.
The lowest level.
Well, well, so the highest level, they would match, you know, what anybody else's, you know, increase point, and I also came into the heart of mine in. Three percent.
And everybody has to be at the same.
That's not true. They've, they've written their motions that way. Um, there is no rules or laws or, or things that I know on the books that say that each county has to, you know, be in line with each other.
Commissioner Scott?
No, I sat on the board. I've been absent for the last two meetings, but, uh, I don't have any questions right, right at the moment.
Commissioner, uh, Serber.
I thought Denise said at the meeting the last day, the, it was this past Monday, that, uh, everybody had to be on the same page as far as the dollar amount, the percentage. I may be mistaken, but I, I thought that, yeah, I thought that's what she said, but I could be mistaken.
I don't want to be the guy that said I caveated. I'm like, not perfectly versed with
Okay.
public health.
Right.
That's why I go if there's any rules or.
Yeah, because that kind of surprised me when you said that, actually, so.
I can, I can definitely say that each county has their own allotment, like.
Right, I understand.
I guess OGMAC doesn't be the same as Ascot.
Right.
They're different. And I don't know that, you know, one percentage, if you're all for one, all for, you know, one for one.
And I also understand from what she told us at that meeting is you are going to attempt to develop a formula that makes sense, that can be presented to all the county boards to say we're basing on per capita plus, perhaps.
I've done research and found the two thousand eighteen formula that was, you know, used to give this information. There's two key aspects to it. One key aspect is population. So population is one driver. The second key aspect, and I, like I said, I don't know if it's good, bad, or different, but it is what it is. It's the state equalized values of accumulation of all the parcels in, in that district. So I know when we talked to Iosco, they weren't thrilled with that one.
Because they got the highest of both, I'm sure, by far.
They do have the highest population. They do have the highest property values. Um, you know, like I said, I, I can't go back to two thousand eighteen. My logic says it makes sense, but it's my logic. I can't project logic to anybody else. Like, I don't see, you know, there's no fatal flaw where it's like, okay, this doesn't make sense to me.
Right, no.
The way I looked at it too, because I looked at the original formula, and I found the source documents where they went to that. I took it a step further and broke it out by, and it's, it all adds up to the same at the end, but I looked at, you know, the different categories of property, you know, residential, commercial.
Right.
Just to kind of have those data points to look across. Like I said, I don't see that there's anything fatally wrong with that formula. But at the same point, I can't sit here and say that, you know, my state, my reputation is, it's just, it's just very new. The, the plan is to bring something to the, the individual, you know.
So that everybody, so that everybody understands what the, what that allocation request, how it's reflected.
How it looks at, and you know what? The best answer might be, we live with this forever, and we just move forward with, with a CPI index every year. You know, the fact that we're looking for ten percent is a big ask. But the, also the big asset's, it's over, you know, it's a seven-year gap of last request. You know, I mean, basically, you know, in private companies, budgets go up every year, and they, you look at it, you know, sales go up by this much, but costs go up, you know, three plus or plus, depending on exactly what the, you know, parameters of union contracts and things like that are. So being that this is my first go-around with a, you know, a budget for this, and first time I'm
Nope.
learning and trying to educate as I go through. Because one thing I like to have for myself is transparency, not just for what I do, but be able to show it to everybody so they know where I came from. And if there's something that they don't like, then we can discuss it, maybe move a different direction. But right now, it's very, very infant stages of, of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayhew.
Uh, what's your guys' fund balance right now?
Fund balance, I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head. I do know that we have a cash balance of around four million dollars.
So what's the difference between your cash balance and fund balance?
Uh, fund balance looks at outstanding liabilities.
And cash balance?
It is cash in the bank.
What amount? Hold on, guys. What amount, geez, what amount do you guys like to operate with?
We like to have at least three, three and a half, depending on how things go. Right now, with the uncertainty that we have in Lansing, we're scared.
Okay.
Because we usually have, you know, and you guys are probably in the same boat, but we usually have budget by July first, or at least earmarks of where we are. And the House just brought their budget two days ago, the state or the Democrat, or, sorry, the Democrats, the, um, Senate has went with their, you know, for a little bit, and the governor has had her ideas, and they haven't gotten to the room and reconciled that yet. They still have about thirty-five to forty days, but I'm not going to hold my breath that anybody's going to play nice with each other on that one.
Commissioner Wiltsy?
Well, I was just wondering, would like to get that information of what your guys' fund balance is.
Yeah, I can, I can find that for you.
Commissioner Serber.
Nothing more.
I thought you were, had a statement.
No, it's just the fact that the, the cash on hand is, is total cash on hand, and there are restricted funds in there that they, you know, it's like we have restricted funds too, so.
We have freed up a lot of our restricted funds from our two thousand twenty-four audit. The last audit we went through, we were able to open up some of that restrictions.
Commissioner Mayhew, anything else?
Oh.
Commissioner Scott?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, claims, claims total was five hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. I will make a motion to approve claims.
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsy. Commissioner Wiltsy and I review the claims. Commissioner Wiltsy, you want to take it forth?
Um, yeah, I the claims is along with you, and I really didn't have anything that really popped out too far in my head. I got one, Tim, maybe this is for you, is under emergency management. Um, this last week or last time we did claims, it's kind of caught my attention on some salaries that we were paying. And I saw this, this past week there for an LE, L E P E coordinator under emergency management. Um, is that a once-a-year thousand dollars or? No, or?
I am done. I'll just default to say I don't know off the top of my head. I've got an idea what it is, but I'm not sure it's right. I wouldn't want to talk to Mike about it, but I believe this is tied to a grant that we received for a certain training program, but I, I want to wait to talk to him. So at the next, maybe the whole meeting, I can get you an answer to that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, not really.
Just start, oh, I've seen in there, and then I'll just, just on my answer to the question. So window replacement, the, there was a bill in there, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, that would come out of the ARPA funds. The building would be S and A. There was forty-one, forty-six. Does that mean our, uh, building department is, is moving forward with some tech savvy programs?
I think that's our annual, or, you know, one of our maintenance fees for the programs that we use, kind of like a licensing fee.
Because I know we talked about that, and I was, I seen that, and I was like, hey, okay. NX Electric was fifteen hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, electric in the sheriff's office, and it didn't specify, it just said electric sheriff, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. And I think it's the old one. I don't know why that would be so much, because the one across the street was a lot more than that last claims.
I need to look at the bill and see for sure which one it was.
Check that, because that, that really bumped up. I think last time it was three hundred, and it was seven fifty-seven. I wrote it down. So summer tax bill, five thousand, and I don't know if this is zero or an eight, thirty-five. Uh, health insurance, just so people kind of have an idea. It's just a few things I jot down when I go through it that surprises me. Seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. Workman's comp was seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. Medical care. You know, this was a big, a big savings for us. Uh, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for the jail this past uh, thirty days, our, uh, claims rotation. So that's, that's a huge savings for us. The ME was a little bit higher this time. That's another thing that we've really saved a lot of money on from what I've seen since I've been doing claims. Little higher this time, a bill for ten thousand, forty-one dollars, but that, uh, there were some autopsies and some transports, and it looked like they had been a little busy over the last uh, month, month and a half. So that's really the only things that I jotted down, so.
I got one more.
Yep.
Good catch on the, on the jail, because, um, that number definitely some or some dollars for, for that over there right now, something is not right there. Um, there was one other line item under BS and A. It was ten thousand and some dollars, and S and A, um.
What was it under?
I don't. I don't remember exactly what it was under. It was just another charge that said BS and A, ten thousand, some, because I saw the one that you, you know.
That was under the building department.
Right, right, and there was a the ten.
I think the ten thousands on mine, I paid my office, my special fund pays for all of the, um, financial and the tax assessing and tax uh, annual maintenance for BS and A software.
So that's what that was for?
And it's paid out of my five oh seven fund, not of the tax dollars.
Okay. Yeah, that just caught my eye because I saw the, the other large, you know, C number.
These are very expensive. Very, very, and when we go to the cloud, it'll be triple what we're getting, you know.
That's coming. We talked a little bit about that at the MTA.
Coming close.
Any questions on the claims?
Yeah, but, I mean, it looks like a lot, but really, when you take that window replacement out of there, it really, they were kind of light. I, I went through them pretty quickly, surprisingly.
Yeah, we'll take that out and insurance, you don't, you don't have much at all.
They're working.
There looks like to be quite a few empty empty titles, so, empty folder.
There's a lot of empty folders.
So they'll be coming, they'll be coming two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, there was no inmate charges on there. Yeah, there wasn't much on there, really. So, okay, roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Mark Serber.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item ten A, unfinished business, animal control officer position. Tim, there's some information on here. Would you like to take the lead on this?
Yes, this is a part of our ongoing discussion. Uh, there was, uh, conversation at our last meeting about the difference on the cost of a full-time animal control officer versus a part-time. So the document that you have on the iPads gives you that breakdown. You've got the part-time scenario, uh, what that would look like. You've got the full-time scenario. That last column will give you the difference. And you'll notice that the difference is primarily compensation-related wages, workers' comp, social security, and so on. I did, uh, take the liberty of bumping the fuel up a little bit, just in anticipation. If you add, uh, what, fifteen hours to a position, you probably are going to have more time in the vehicle. So we would want to make sure that that was covered. Uh, I will point out that the current fiscal year assumes this position is part-time at twenty-five hours per week, and that number has not been altered. We went probably, I'm going to say a good half of the fiscal year without anybody in that position. So there's half of that twenty-some thousand, twenty-six thousand, whatever it was, that hasn't been spent. So when we close off the books on this fiscal year, that will be added to the fund balance as well as the fund balances that we anticipate just moving straight. So the, the very last couple of numbers that you see on a part-time animal control officer scenario, working through fiscal year twenty-six, that fund balance would be at ninety-nine thousand dollars, or roughly forty-six percent. If you chose to go with a full-time, that fund balance would be fifty-one thousand, four fifty, or just under twenty percent. Those fund balances frankly would be healthy for a fund like this. Uh, but I would also point out that this is the second year of a two-year millage. So this is, in effect, the entire program, uh, for the, uh, millage that was voted on. So then, and there would be funds left over. Point being, if you wanted to go with a full-time position, you can comfortably do that from a financial perspective. Uh, but that's totally your call. Now, other, uh, points to make on the full-time scenario. This assumes a full-time employee would opt for the seven percent maximum employer match on the retirement program. If the employee chose any other number under seven, obviously, then that surplus would go up a little bit. But the big one is the health insurance. This projection assumes that whomever we place in that job will need the family coverage. And that obviously is the most expensive coverage that we have. If we hired someone who only needed the two-person coverage, then we would subtract another five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars from that total. If the individual went just simply for single-person coverage, then you would subtract. If the individual went just simply for single-person coverage, then you would subtract fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five from that total. And finally, if the employee had insurance elsewhere and opted for the in-lug payment of twenty-five hundred dollars, then you would subtract from that total twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Any way you uh, look at that, that would be an increase in that fund balance in the end. So if you weld that uh, scenario that I provided you, I will call it the worst-case scenario, but it'd be the maximum scenario for the compensation based on the wage schedule that's already been adopted and where we know the uh, P A one fifty-two rates are for twenty twenty-six.
Ju- just so individuals know, the difference is forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Correct, Tim?
Right.
Comments, Commissioner Wiltsey.
Um, I've, I've been pretty admin consistent on my thoughts on this and I know Commissioner David, you said that you've been a number of your townships and there hasn't really seemed like a lot of people have seen the need for the full-time animal control. I know my township of Mills Township and I've talked with other residents outside of the township that have reached out to me. I've just talking passing, um, that have had experience since our officer who is now leaving sadly, um, has been here. Um, the need is there. Um, I have respect for our nine-one-one director and I think she works really hard for us and uh, she's came to us, she's given us data. Um, I believe that data and it shows that the need is there. Our outgoing animal control officer, you know, spoke to us and told us about the need and you could tell his passion for his job and I don't think there's any reason that he needed to not be honest with us. Um, and the big thing is obviously for sustainability, I understand that this is millage funded. Um, but the, the money is there. The residents have spoken when they passed the millage. They know the need is there. They want to see this animal control situation consistently being taken care of. We have the money. Um, I think in order to create a department where we're going to be able to someone long-lasting, because I do feel confident that millage will continue to pass, I think a full-time position is pretty much mandatory.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, I guess I gotta refer to Tim having this one, um. Uh, assuming, assuming uh, all the, the seven percent, the uh, the family healthcare, the whole thing. Assuming that's forty-seven thousand uh, dollar difference gets sucked up uh, because of that. Uh, going forward though, the reason why we have a fund balance is because we had an absence of an officer for six months.
Right.
Within the two-year millage. Correct?
You would have had a fund balance, it wouldn't be anywhere near what it is.
Right, right. So going forward though, when this test, I would imagine somebody's going to want this question back up on the ballot again. Us, and assuming we do that and assuming it would get approved at the same rate, how long can that millage sustain a full-time person if if they don't quit and there's an absence in, in the, in the months?
That's a valid question.
Yeah. Yeah. Because we passed it, we put it on the ballot as a part-time position. And the only reason it's built this size of a uh, of a fund balance is because we had a lack of a, because the, the, we're lack of payroll.
Can you verify in the millage is that a part-time position that the constituents passed?
It did not say part-time position. It just said animal control officer.
Well, we funded it. We, we, we deliberated on that.
We did. We did.
It may not have set it in the, in the ballot, but we deliberated on that and that's why we set that military at that level. If we needed a full-time position, we should have put another point one, two, or something like that on it.
So to answer your question, I'll just break this down. Uh, first of all, for the twenty twenty-six budget, we're projecting the point two mills will bring in two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, just on the millage. But the last couple of years, the tax bill values increased at roughly five percent. Now that's pretty um,
Aggressive.
Pretty aggressive, a higher number than what you would normally see, but from what I'm hearing from building inspections in particular, with the amount of building that continues to go on, it's not unreasonable to think in twenty twenty-seven, you're going to have something pretty similar. So let's just work with that. That would put us at a roughly two hundred and forty-five thousand on this point two, if again, it were renewed at that level, all right? This budget projects expenditures at two hundred and sixty-one thousand. Wages, we've already established a scale, so let's assume that we hire somebody, they're on board October first and then twenty twenty-seven rolls around, there will be an increase in those wages. Uh, so you're probably looking at a gap similar to what we're seeing right now. We're projecting a two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar budget, two hundred and thirty-three thousand in revenue from the millage, another fifteen thousand from dog licenses. Uh, and frankly, having a full-time animal control officer, I would expect that to increase because you're going to end up ticketing people for more unlicensed dogs, most likely. Uh, and then you've got the interest of four hundred and fifty built into that. So you're probably looking at uh, just doing that rough math, then a pretty close um, do that expenditure that we have for this year. So it, just putting that together and again, just shooting from the hip, you're probably looking at uh, expenditures about ten thousand dollars over what your revenues are, just wild guess of looking at this. Uh, and what would we do then to balance that budget? You're saying you wanted to go strict, straight with the point two, just keep that? We've got a number of other line items in here that you probably whittle away at. One of those, uh, actually, there's two of them, uh, right toward the middle. There's one called the Animal Care Court and the other one, the Veterinary Services. Uh, for the court, this is for uh, an animal that's quarantined, is part of a court case. Uh, you wouldn't necessarily keep an animal for more than a couple of weeks in quarantine, but if there's uh, uh, court case going on, the courts may have you hang onto that animal for several months. So the idea here is that you've got funds in the budget. Take care of that. And that veterinary care services uh, right now has not been um, you know, spent to that level. I think between those two, you probably end up with enough reductions in expense to balance that budget out. So yes, it would be tight to continue, but yes, I think you could continue. Your fund balance won't be anywhere near, you know, the twenty percent anymore. But that's the trade-off. Now, with the millage expiring though, at the end of twenty-six, if you looked at this and said, well, we really need point two, five mills, you could ask for it. You just couldn't uh, call it a renewal anymore.
Be a raise.
Right, right. That's, that, and that's what I'm, I'm looking at. I don't want to raise it up anymore. My personal thing, I don't want to raise it up anymore than what it is now. I gotta think that shelter's going to want more money. We can argue at that point when we get there, but.
Or dogs.
Hold on, I'm going to let everybody take a turn and then I'll go back through everybody.
All right. Yeah, I'm good then, right now.
Commissioner Mayhew.
I'm, I'm pretty much set on part-time. That's what we raised the guy's wages for. It was sixteen bucks. We raised it to twenty because it was part-time help. So that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Serbuk.
I have been back and forth on this. It's, I'm poor, quite frankly. Um, you know, and, and Commissioner Mayhew brings up some valid points and Commissioner Scott as well, you know. Um, we're paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the shelter. If this position goes full-time, they may see an influx of dogs from us. And they may want more money. How, when's the contract expire with the shelter? How long is that contract? Does anybody know? The duration of the contract?
No.
Do you know?
It's one year.
I think it is annually.
So they can renegotiate or try and renegotiate, or we could try and renegotiate with them.
They're gonna do that.
I, I, have you done, Commissioners?
I am, I'm still poor, so.
I think that's fair. I, I got a couple of things here and I jotted some things down. First of all, I appreciate and respect all of my fellow Commissioners' opinions on this. I um, I think we all have various opinions on this. I, a little upsetting, our previous animal control officer, we paid for him to go to training. Um, which was quite costly and it, and it occurred over a couple of month period. Uh, he went to neighboring counties. There was quite a bit to all of this. Um, we hired him, we gave him a raise. We went from sixteen dollars to twenty hours. We, we gave him twenty-four hours a week. Never once did we hear from him specifically come into this, the, come into one of our meetings and ask for full-time, to ask for a raise, to ask for absolutely anything. Nor did we hear that this individual uh, took another full-time position from a neighboring uh, county. I talked to the nine-one-one dispatcher yesterday. Um, average calls per day for animal, animal, an animal issue, whether they respond, don't respond. This is just a simple call to the dispatch center. It's two and a half to three and a half calls per day. Of course, there's a little influx, she said, on the weekends, you know, that, that may be why that average is two and a half to three and a half. Uh, prior to the, to the recent animal control officer, we had Scott. Scott came in here. He asked for more hours during the summer. We gave him more hours in the summer. He said, you know, hey, I'm, I'm busier in the summer. I'm not quite so busy in the winter. So we, we, we did that, trying to accommodate him and, and, and that kept him here with us a little bit longer. We don't know a part-time position at twenty out, twenty dollars an hour. We don't know who's going to apply. What's, we have no idea. We haven't done it. Um, we can even increase twenty-five hours to twenty-nine hours before they're considered part-time to full-time. I mean, we have some fluctuation here and this doesn't have to be uh, for sure. I, if we put the job posting out there, we see who applies, we, we move forward with that, say we don't get any applicants, then we bring this back to the table and revisit in a month and say, okay, a month or two months or whatever it may be, we, we can't find um, a valid applicant. Let's, let's try something different. But I think we tried making a pretty rash decision trying to hang on to the previous animal control officer, which obviously didn't work and I, and I respect that, but I, I think with, with a, a administrator here that we have, one um, important uh, that's happened, we've made educated decisions based on gathering data. Um, any information that we request or we get the information with all of the software, with all the technology like these calls. We take our time, sometimes too long, but we take our time and, and we make wise decisions. I think again, we tried making a very quick rash decision in an attempt to hold on to somebody and I, I appreciate that. Again, we had some money invested in this individual. And the community was very, very um, impressed with, with this animal control officer. It's a shame he didn't come to us before he, he took this other position, but he did, asking for whatever he, he wanted or didn't want or, or, or whatever. I, right now, am in totally in favor of what we've decided on. Again, I'm, I'm in favor of revisiting this if we can't get applicants. But that is, that is my, I am not hearing any complaints from my townships. I think two and a half to three and a half calls per day. To me, that's not a full-time position. That's my opinion. Let's take it to the table again. Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, we, the agreement with the shelter is a two-year agreement and that was uh, decided at December nineteenth. So it takes us all of calendar year twenty-five and all of calendar year twenty-six.
Commissioner Wiltsey.
Um, well, one, one thing that I was concerned about when we first started the talks of this and the millage was passed was the fact that you know, we don't have our own shelter, which I understand the costs that come along with that. Um, and I'm not saying that we need one. But obviously, you know, we're, we're funding a, a private shelter. Uh, we are getting consistent reports from them, but I, I felt from the beginning that that deal was a little bit too sweet. I still think that number could be a little bit too high and obviously we're locked into it for two years. But I really think that we really need to make sure that we, we see that we're getting what the money we're spending with the shelter is right. And I think there is a possibility there could be some extra money left over uh, from that after we realize after two years what we've gotten out of that. Now, of course, you know, we two-year commitment there, but I really think there is that possibility. Um, that's just why I just wanted to touch base on.
Commissioner Scott, anything else?
The only thing to your statement, I, I don't know that Officer Forsites could come and talk to us because when, when we first had an animal control officer, he reported to, to Tim, that was Scott there, and we got really great reports and then we gave it up to the Sheriff's Department and all the reports stopped. And then we, we get very scarcely got a report here and there. And Scott answered to the sheriff. He no longer even came to us for anything. Um, so this time around, I don't know. And we didn't hear anything from the sheriff when, when he took this job. We don't know if if the sheriff even knew. Uh, the cat got out of the bag because the, the newspaper editor heard it down in Aaronat County. Um, so uh, but we did, we did increase it and it's go, and I, I gotta project an increase over year over year. I mean, we're gonna probably do that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so the costs, you know, and I've just said it already. This goes back on the ballot. I don't want it to go for any more than what it is now. That's just my opinion of it, so.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Bye.
Anything else, Dan?
Um, I'm hoping more to add.
Commissioner Serbuk, anything more to add?
Don't mind.
Okay. Other unfinished business?
Well, we go to a, a motion then.
I didn't, I will, if you would like to make a motion, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, to uh, hire a part-time animal control officer. And uh, continue.
I don't think you need to. There, it's how it currently stands. You don't like to make a motion.
All right.
Item ten, unfinished business. Any others, Commissioners? Initiative, oh, Initiative slash Controllers report.
You've got a report on the iPad. I wanted to point to the last page. I've um, looks in collecting all this data uh, on the distribution of my time over the report period. I, I'm now able to show you what that distribution looked like over the past year. So it's, you know, kind of an interesting comparison uh, looking at this um, for this particular report period, I spent less time in meetings, but more time preparing and following up on those meetings. So that's just an interesting thing to kind of watch in terms of contrast to where that time goes. A lot of time was spent on RFPs this last period, but we got uh, I think three of them uh, that either live or are going to be live here very shortly. Uh, and uh, we also had a lot of uh, work going over RFPs that were received, uh, some uh, say we overachieved a little bit on the responses uh, on those too. So um, that's, it's just an interesting way at a glance to kind of take a look at this um, review. The, one other thing I wanted to point out, brief narrative on the bottom of page two, we did have a virtual meeting with NeoGov. They are a provider of software. This is in follow-up to some of the struggles we've had with the UKG system over the last few months. In fact, really, we've had more, more concerns than I would have expected uh, since we've converted to UKG. And so just, it's a part of our own due diligence. We're kind of looking at other things, other software packages that are out there. If we're not able to get our issues resolved with UKG, uh, you know, what other options do we have? And so that was the purpose of meeting with them. It's a great program uh, that NeoGov offers. Uh, but at the same time, we don't really want to switch if we don't have to. And I'll just say this for UKG, we did see some marked improvements here over the last few weeks. We still have a few nuances that, that we've got to get cleared up, but I think of uh, well, at least the corrections we had to make were, were substantially fewer this last pay period than what they've been. So hopefully we're on the right track and we won't need to uh, go any further looking at any of these other programs, but at least there's something out there that we can be confident in if we need to. And just one more thing to point out, that paragraph right above there, about the uh, certified driver authorizations that we do. We need, need to do this annually when we do our insurance renewals, which we're in the process of gathering all the data right now and getting that uh, over for uh, quotes. Um, a couple of years ago, we passed our driver policy to get these forms put in. The main reason being the carrier wants to know, are we safe drivers? And so annually, we ask everybody to fill out these forms. Have you had any accidents in the last year? If so, what type of accidents were they? And I can tell you, there've been maybe, maybe five that had reported accidents and they were relatively minor car deer kind of thing. There weren't um, anything serious. So that helps us hopefully keep our rates down a little bit, but what I was very happy with over a ten-day period, seventy-five of our employees have completed that form, which is a, a ratio that's far greater than what we've seen for the last couple of years. Got a few uh, still out there, but some of our employees don't drive for us. They don't, and so it, it becomes an optional um, uh, form for them to complete. If they don't drive, there really isn't any reason to complete it. But the other side of the coin is you don't drive for the county if, if you don't complete the form. And I think that's very well understood. Uh, we do want to make sure anybody driving, you know, daily for us, like our bus drivers. And I think that's very well understood, uh, we do want to make sure anybody driving, you know, daily for us, like our bus drivers, the transit, our patrol deputies and so on. Have the completed forms and they do, uh, so anyway, very happy with the response and I'm sure that the carrier will be too. And then the last item, just to remind you, next Thursday, uh, we have four audit teams coming in uh to talk to you and that'll be probably the first hour of your meeting. Depending on the number of questions that we might have, uh, one of those firms is asked to uh present by Zoom. Uh, which is all well and good, I don't recommend it that way, they understood that, I told them that outright, but they have other commitments in other parts of the state and it's just impossible to get here. Uh, in time for our meeting, so it's a decent alternative, uh, but you'll have that to look forward to and uh we'll move along on that process.
Pack a snack.
Yeah.
Questions for them.
What's uh, what's uh, what's the deadline on this uh? Author is driver certification. When do we have, when does everybody?
I I gave everybody the deadline of September one to have them in. Uh, and that's what I want to be the cutoff date annually moving forward, so we don't have to worry about, well, I filled out in December last year, can I wait until February or whatever? September one's our date and then with any new employee that we might hire. After that, this is part of the employee package, so if they're gonna drive, they'll have the form right there or the link to it uh to complete it, so we can keep everything up to date and current.
So we're lacking a dozen, really?
Yeah, a dozen and they may not be drivers.
Well, I I think we're lacking about, I think we're still over a hundred employees, aren't we?
Yeah.
But but I would say out of the twenty-five that's missing, a dozen need to get it done?
Maybe, yeah, I haven't scrutinized it that closely.
They're gonna alert.
I will.
Not just them, but maybe their department heads.
Yep.
Well, there should be some type of disciplinary action if they're not gonna fulfill this.
Well, there's there's uh, you know, your risk that you run, first of all, if you haven't got one of these forms complete, we may not reimburse you for your travel. If you use your own vehicle to travel, uh, but second, I mean, if something does happen, our carrier could decide not to cover you.
Right.
Which is, I think, risky enough.
I don't want to get to that point, I just have them comply, I mean, it's it's a reasonable request.
It is, and I will take the time to scrutinize to find out where those are, if there are drivers that I know of that are in there, they will hear from me as well, their department head. Uh, and I will, you know, just simply lay out the consequence in doing it.
Okay.
Any questions for Tim? Elected officials and department heads, Rick Clerk.
Uh, Brock Gildner, Yorgama County Clerk. Um, I have just been in the middle of a couple of trainings going on lately. Um, last week I was at Mount Pleasant for the Michigan Association of County Clerks training. Um, learned a lot there now with it being my fifth year. Um, I understand more of what. The discussions are and topics that we talk about and um I feel that it is extremely beneficial to be there. Uh, next week, the Bureau of Elections is putting on a training Tuesday and Wednesday in Lansing, so I'll be down there. Um. And that's really it, we're just busy in the office fulfilling all the requests. We have a potential jury trial coming up end of the month. Um. Other than that, business as usual.
Treasurer.
Good evening, Karen Kloski, Yorgama County Treasurer. I just have a couple of things for you tonight to let you know that we did a delinquent tax mailing today, two thousand two hundred sixty-seven pieces for mail. Um, that is up two hundred and ninety-nine pieces from last year, so slightly higher delinquency right now. And today is also the tax foreclosure auction, we're open till seven P M to get your bids in. It's an online auction at tax sale info dot com. Um, we had thirty-three properties that were foreclosed and the last I looked before coming over, meaning twenty-nine out of the thirty-three had bid. And it was just above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're getting some good healthy bids, but a half hour left, thank you for listening, thank you.
Thanks, Under Sheriff.
That's my better judgment. I'm gonna beat a dead horse, but I just want to clarify from the record, just real quick, I'm an animal control. He was uh employed in a major employer in Yorgama County, he was on a part-time job. You know, with the foreseeing that he was going to find his call away and have the opportunity to go down to Aaronak and take that full-time job. When he originally approached the sheriff's office and asked to do that, uh, he fully intended to do the part-time for Yorgama. That's why we didn't approach the commissioners, obviously, it was pretty clear that the commissioners wanted part-time. Uh, and so we stayed the course, nobody could have foreseen the fact that down with the shelter, number one, they were gonna lose an employee a short time after he took that position. And that the second employee was only gonna work weekends. So we factor that into his decision-making and he likes the shelter, which was communicated. And he made this and leave a major retailer that operates in Yorgama County and go to Aaronak County. So that's part of the reason why it wasn't communicated or we didn't bring it for a full time, it was kind of last minute, last ditch effort. We did invest a lot of money in this person, we did, so round about that and we're gonna use that.
He was a full-time uh employee here before he became animal control, I didn't know that.
He was a full-time employee with another major. Um, business that operates in Yorgama County.
Oh, okay, but not with us, not in Yorgama, not an Yorgama County employee?
No.
Okay, that's what I understood.
Business that operates within Yorgama County.
Okay.
So his schedule allowed for that and when he first came, that he found his passion and he wants to be animal control.
That's fair.
He approved to go to animal control in Aaronak County. Leaving this major retailer in Yorgama County with the intent to fulfill what. The final actual obligations of the commissioners were, so that's why we didn't approach. But to ask for differences until these other circumstances arose and now all of a sudden we're based with those little decisions and here we come. So I just wanted that for the record, just to clarify that it was not a lack of communication or that type of stuff, so.
Is the under, is the part-time position posted?
It is not posted because of everything that's going on.
Okay.
I posted the full-time position based off of the committee, the whole, no action was taken, so I pulled it down immediately. We got six applicants for that full-time position, I've not reposted it, right now it's a vacant part-time, will remain that way, I'll get it posted tomorrow.
Perfect, thanks, thank you, go ahead, Commissioner Wiltse.
Um, our sheriff, I I respect you, we work together on a lot of different things, especially EMS, we work real well together. But one thing we did talk about at that L E meeting afterwards is, you know, you you say that, you know, you didn't feel you needed to communicate with us. This is something we've talked about, you know, I, we found out that our animal control officer was leaving through Doug at the Herald. You know, again, it's that simple communication, and I think if that communication would have been there, I'm not saying things could be different. But it could have spurred some conversations early before we got to a point we're at now. And also, there's not a lot of people that can work sixty-five hours a week, to me, that's not sustainable. I don't, I I would have said, I don't think this is a good idea, let's let's talk about this and have that conversation then. I know it's done and over with right now, but it is another example of we do need to have better communication.
Well, again, when we hired him, he was a full-time employee and that was what he was doing, doing the fine job he was doing, switching the full-time position. With him communicating to us that he was gonna maintain his part-time position, I don't think at that point. Really was a communication point, at least in my eyes, because we were still gonna be fulfilling what was mandated. Until things started changing, he was not leaving, he was going to stay until those employee issues happened out of the shelter. Then he started communicating with us by that time, it had already been alleged that he was leaving Yorgama County, which he had not turned in his resignation. We were still communicating, when he finally made the decision, he turned in his resignation and it was submitted through the channels. But.
So he was working another full-time?
Came earlier, but the shelter is the big thing. He's communicated that operating the shelter, that channel was a really deciding factor. Again, not to make excuses, I just want to get it out there so we have it on the record.
I appreciate that, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate you coming here and explaining that, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Go ahead.
I got a question, Paul. Um. The meeting that we had and we we didn't provide a support for the for the motion standing. You were here with the sheriff, did you, you left the room, did, was that to take it off of Facebook?
Yeah, because.
So at that point, but now at that point, you you had six, six people interested.
We still have six applicants based on that.
But I mean, at that point, that day, you had six. We also, the chair also asked for department head reports. Once again, in communication, why not bring it up that we had this posted on Facebook and we got. Six, six people that were interested.
It was communicated at some point and I.
I don't remember.
Sheriff said we had six applicants, I remember it, some, it was reported that.
Okay, well, I missed it then, I missed it.
It was, I remember that, all right, because we were surprised at how fast the six applicants came in, because I only had it up for. I don't know, it was a day, two days, I don't even remember how long it was up.
Can can you let us know as far as when you get that part-time up and and how many applicants and and even if it's communicating by by email? If if you're uncomfortable, your schedule doesn't fit, whatever, coming here, I mean, you email us quite frequently, I appreciate that, I read through those, that is also to me valid communication. So I.
I reject those emails too, I do.
I do.
So, that's what I'm telling you, thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Elected officials departments on the phone, uh, Jack, do you have anything?
Uh, but the only thing I have is, uh, I I know about a week or so ago, there was a question on the T-shirts that we ordered, that's more of a branding thing. Um, uh, we've got most of our I T equipment purchased through the grant, uh, we got a couple more items, roughly about a. A thousand to about fifteen hundred dollars left on that. Our biggest concern right now is um our our market branding and marketing, all the little knickknacks that we planned on uh getting and utilizing. We've gotten the seventeen thousand dollars worth of shirts, but we still have another about twenty-seven thousand dollars in out there in items that we want to order. The problem we're running into is that these uh vendors unfortunately will not do an invoice. So we're we're trying to, and I have to get with Tim next week after the holiday to see how we want to go about paying for it. They want credit cards and of course, our credit card does not have that type of uh a charging limit on there. So we need to figure out another way uh to purchase these items for the grant. Um, I I don't know if Tim would be able to do that, but it's, that's the problem we're running into right now.
Tim?
So the process would be if we were to get some idea of what expenses Jeff was talking about is that we would then bring that to you and request for a temporary increase in the limit on that card. And then you could make the call right then if if you were agreeable to doing it, but you'll at least have the information of what the expenses are uh and can make an educated decision when when asked.
Jeff, I did get your explanation, um, I think it was the last meeting those T-shirts were brought up when I seen that invoice and I appreciate that, I did read through yours and Jared also sent me an explanation, so thank you for that.
No problem, thank you.
Tony, I see you on the phone as well.
Yes, good, uh, good evening commissioners, uh, the only thing I have is the transit will be closed on Monday for Labor Day, I've got nothing else.
Thank you, anybody I missed? Manager on the floor? Motions for adoption? Commissioners reports, Commissioner Serwick.
I attended a board orientation for them, so I've been on the board since January, but uh I was unable to attend their June board orientation for new board members. I was up there a couple of weeks ago, so that that taken care of, by statute, they have to do an orientation within a certain time period for new board members. Up there, so that took care of that. Commissioner Scott and I, uh, we're at the airport board meeting last week. Um, among other things, at the airport. We are looking at long-term getting some fencing around the airport because of issues with deer. A couple of months ago, there was actually a deer strike with an aircraft. Um, needless to say, the deer lost, not much damage to the aircraft, saying God.
Yes.
And no personal injury.
Could be horrible.
But believe it or not. Even though Ben took pictures of the aircraft and the deceased deer on the runway. The FAA doesn't consider that credible evidence that we have a wildlife issue. So there has to be a survey done.
Oh, my gosh.
By the USDA to say that there is a wildlife issue, whether it be with deer, rabbits, or anything else. USDA gave us three different proposals, one under the tune of ninety-six thousand dollars due to survey. Uh, we opted for a one-day survey, which was, what was it, Craig, um.
A thousand dollars.
The one day, so two thousand dollars.
Two thousand.
Yep, while the one we opted for was just a one-day visit, two thousand, then they had another uh one for fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, then the one for ninety-six thousand and then I had another one for continuation monitoring, and they mounted ninety-six thousand dollars. So, um, we opted for the two thousand dollar one-day survey. Then they will come out during the daytime and the evening times when they can observe the nocturnal animals that may be coyotes, etc., but yeah.
Lock that controls up.
No evidence of of a dead deer in a crashed up airplane is not sufficient. We'll figure, federal government, um, it was basically the highlight airport, if I missed it, and then Craig can touch on. Uh, Commissioner Wiltse, myself and Tim, we had transit. After that, we met at the airport and we went over, uh, and I, Tony, I had wished that when you come on these Zoom meetings with us, you'd. Kind of just touch on the highlights of your director's report that you provide to us at the committee level. Um, even though it, I believe it's, we got the.
It's on our.
Post it on our, on our iPad.
It is.
Um, you know, it'd be great if you could just touch on some highlights. Uh, some of us don't, I mean, obviously, I was there and Commissioner Wiltse and Tim were there, but sometimes some of the commissioners just miss uh. Reading those, so if you could hit the highlights, I'd certainly appreciate that, so, um. I sit on District Health, we had an emergency water supply advisory committee, which I sit on meeting. On Friday, there was a well driller that was drilling a well in Alcona County, hit a flow. That flow was kicking out three hundred and sixty gallons a minute. And it was on Lake Huron. Needless to say, the well driller was in panic mode, shall we say, but he did an excellent job, they ended up um getting it down to just a a flow of uh sixty gallons a minute. What this advisory committee does is it's a group of well drillers and then there are two of us that sit on the board of uh. The Health Department that sit on it as well, and they actually brainstormed. These guys came in and and, you know, the well driller explained what was going on. So we're looking at the expertise of these other well drillers that sit on there. It it was interesting to listen to because what, more than once, a well driller would say, well, you know, if you did this, this, and then he'd stop and go, that's not gonna work, you know? So anyway, they put their heads together, came up with a plan and so far, um, we got a report at the uh Monday. At the Health Department that the plan that uh was decided upon by the group there is uh working. They did finally end up getting permission to be able to empty some of the water into Lake Huron, but it's running through uh silt traps. So there's no silt going into Lake Huron evidently as well was quite silty, so they're making headway on that. I was at District Health Department, um, as you well know from the presentation, they're asking for a ten percent increase and they also reiterated that. Um, I was going to Alcona Counties, didn't prove the ten percent, I asked only one of the three. Um, I'm sure this is gonna be an issue on our next committee to hold, have much further discussion on this issue. Uh, Commissioner Wiltse and I were, had well events Monday afternoon. That meeting, um, there was discussion in regards to, and you saw there was still. Communication coming from other counties in regards to resolutions against this proposed PIHP bid out. DHHS has already released the RFP for that bid out, uh, there are several entities that are considering suing the state of Michigan. Because it is a violation of state law as to what they're doing. Uh, and believe it or not, in part of their RFP. As these private nonprofits, if they were to take over as a PIHP, they would get their funding directly from the state of Michigan. They hold that and then they make their expenses. Any capital reserves they have left over, they get. Any capital reserves they have left over, they get to hold on to. If their contract is terminated. Or they don't rebid their contract, they get to keep every penny of any of those reserves. If you are a public organization, you have to return every bid up to the state of Michigan. I, I told the state of Michigan, say, no, if you're a, a private nonprofit, you get to keep all the money. If you're a public entity, you got to give it back to the state of Michigan. Well, I think what's fair for one should be fair for everybody. But anyway, that was our major topic with discussion was, uh, what was going on there. Of course, we had MTA and just, just as a side note. When we're talking about these driver updates, when I worked for the, when I was in Paul's position as under sheriff. We did that with our staff over there. Believe it or not, we found the three of our road deputies that had expired driver's licenses. One of them had been expired for more than two years and they weren't even aware of it. So it's amazing what you find out when you start filling those forms out. That concludes my report, ma'am chair.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Uh, Rose City. They're looking to, uh, get some grants for their parks. They got a couple of them now, I guess, one on each side of the road and they're looking for some money there. And they're looking to start charging for trash pickup in the city of Rose City. Now, the people thought that it was part of their taxes, but it ain't. They haven't paid it, but they're, they're, they're going to get that. I went to Good Art. The Sabo Valley mental health lady was there and they're talking about having a. Quit smoking deal over there and the Narcon boxes like they have everywhere else and. Put them in. Good Art. Clacking Township was. They were working on her budget, but the lady was there from. Oh, the old middle school and all the townships have paid their part and, uh. They got three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars in donations from people.
Three thousand?
Three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. And, uh. They're having to rezone it.
Yeah.
Because it is.
Agricultural.
Agriculture residential.
Yep.
And they have to go to commercial, I guess.
Want businesses in there.
Yes. But that concludes my report.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, it's Worcester Township there. Uh, they got three or four new board members in there going through the. Anxiety. And so, uh, they're learning that they need to get some policies in place. So they're working on it. Airport was interesting. I did, uh, tend, uh, road commission earlier this month. And MTA was very, uh, that was very good. I, I was, I was, uh. I, I thought Tim did a very good job explaining, uh, budgetary things to them and things like that. I was kind of surprised on how many people talk during the meeting. I mean, you know how loud it got in there and it, it, you know, key was if you set your own township meeting and talk. And, and people can't hear anything. I'm just so surprised that goes on. One thing that, uh, one thing that, uh, we talked about, well, last, last meeting, you weren't able to attend. And, and, uh, I've had discussions with different people about Zoom and in the. Michigan Township Association Magazine this last month, uh, this current issue, uh, it's. Open Meetings Act is right on the cover and they talk about the Zoom and. I was under a misunderstanding. I thought that we could come on as a commissioner and deliberate. During a meeting, what we couldn't vote on anything. We can't even do that.
Not as a committee of the whole meeting? Not in a meeting, meaning not like this, but in a committee of the whole?
It's, it's a public meeting. The only thing I think we can do is public comment.
Comment.
In the public comment part. Unless, unless it's milit, you're a military servant, active military service or handicapped. And that's it. So I put a call into both state representative and state senator. Offices and asked them, would you please bring this up soon? I got three years left in my term and I'd like to see it happen, something happen before that. So I, I, I would urge. Anybody in the public sector to give your representatives a call and see if they'll. Light a fire under them because this is technology. It works. It did work during COVID. It worked fine. I can see having limitations. I can see whether they're up, they're worried that. Somebody's going to leave for six months and go to Florida and just call in. At least deliberate, uh, ideas and maybe not vote, just something, something. Something more than it is now because the technology's there and I don't know why we can't be used in.
Tim, oh, I'm sorry. Tim, did you have something? You look like you want to say something.
That's not totally consistent with what I understand, but I'm not saying it's wrong, but we do have our attorney on. He might be able to. Maybe shed some light on what you can quickly.
Don, do you want to add anything to that? Cause I'm, I understand it differently as well, but go ahead. John, we can't hear you. It looks like you're unmuted though. Yes. Did you hear the question? Did you hear the question?
I did not.
So the question is if a commissioner is attending, uh, either a committee of the whole or a regular scheduled meeting by Zoom. If they're able to deliberate discuss, we understand that they're not able to vote. But are they able to speak any other time other than public comment?
Let me, that's a very good question and let me, um, what I would like to do is spend a little bit of time. Researching that and then get back with you, okay?
Please, because, uh, I think, I think we all from one time or another are not able to be here in person. I don't think any of us have misused or abused that, but it's, we have this technology and I would like to continue to use it.
Yep, I have the question and then I will definitely get back with you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wilson.
Um, transit, uh, we had our meeting as Commissioner Serbuk said, uh, last week, staffing's in pretty good shape. Um, assistant mechanic position with Tony's getting real aggressive on, uh, getting that going. We really need to get someone in place to start learning under, under Ray. Uh, Ray Schaefer did put in his, um, date of retirement, which is going to be the first of January. So that's a very important position. So hopefully we'll find a good qualified candidate soon to get in there and start learning under Ray with all of his years of experience. Uh, Miller Construction still hasn't finished the pedestrian doors. That was all grant funded. But Tony's been, um, staying on him to get that work done because it needs to get done and especially before winter comes. Um, we all know the financial position of the transit with the decrease of funds from state and federal. So we are constantly working on ways to be more efficient, more productive, keep our costs down. Uh, we have a very strong transit committee. And, uh, I'm glad that Tony's at the helm there. Um, things are going to continue to move forward and we're going to do the best we can with what we have. Uh, housing, um, happy to report that, uh, you know, we are getting some pretty good traction with Ogumah County Housing Alliance. Um, the second open house really opened up a lot of doors. I think if anything, uh, a great example would be that one of the largest, uh, developers and probably east of the Mississippi. Company wise, uh, one of the top developers, they had a project manager there. He's came to one of our meetings. I mean, people are seeing that Ogumah County, especially West Branch area is growing and it's an area that has a lot of potential. Um, so if anything, our advisory council is bringing a lot of exposure to the area because we definitely know the, the need for housing. But I am happy to report that three individuals are acting as developers and one company, the Shane O's out of Gladwin that are all using. Um, the Mishda, the home programs, the grants, and we are getting some, uh. We will be soon having some more houses built through those programs here in Ogumah County. And we also have a landlord, possibly two landlords that are going to be using it to help. Uh, take their rental units to another level. Um, and, uh. That is also a very good aspect of, of the, the state money for their. Uh, EDC, um, we had the B program. You guys all know about that, um, for the internet throughout our county. We definitely have a lot of areas in the county that do not have high, high-speed internet capabilities. We're staying optimistic that when we get that news back, uh, we will be seeing a lot of those areas, um, getting. High-speed internet installed sooner than later. I know it's going to, that would be a big, big plus for a lot of our residents. Um, the childcare, we all know childcare is a big problem throughout the entire state. Um, Iosco County is kind of the lead on a big thing going right now with childcare and I know Penny is really. Uh, right behind on their coattails and hopefully that will lead into some good moves with childcare here in Ogumah County. Um, one thing I want to say for the EDC, for anybody that has a business or, um, is looking to start a business and wants to learn. About Excel, the last Thursday in September at Michigan Works EDC building. We will have an instructor from Kirtland College, uh, there, um, going over how, you know, Excel works. Any problems they have, questions people have. That's going to be a great free training program. That's the last Thursday. Um, in September at the Michigan Works building, starting at six o'clock. Uh, it's another perk of the EDC. We do a lot of those free trainings and a lot of them are very valuable.
Myself and my accounts payable.
Great, great. Clerk's office has two, two going. That's fantastic. Uh, EMS, uh, we had a meeting last week. Paul's our, Paul's our chair, um, with the equipment village that was passed. We have a new ambulance, um, in-house. They're getting it all decked out, which is a good thing because we have some ambulances with high miles and having some engine issues. Uh, union negotiations are, are starting. Um, we're sitting pretty good staffing level. We know overtime is a huge issue with the EMS. And we're going to continue to work on that. MTA meeting, uh, I mirror what Commissioner Scott said. I really appreciate Tim's report. I thought it was great. Shows the importance of the hard decision we had to make with closing the jail and the financial position that we're in and we're going to continue to grow that position. And I also mirror what, uh, Commissioner Serbuk said with Well Vance. I mean, obviously we know more than ever. Look at what happened yesterday. Mental health. Um, Well Vance does more than just mental health, but they're such a key player in mental health here in Ogumah County. This privatization is just absolutely horrible. It makes no sense. You know, MDD, MDDHS out of, out of the state just does this on their own. There, there's no. There's nobody that says that yes, you can do this or can't. They just make this decision. And at the end of the day, from the data that we're seeing, and this is real life data that is, is the facts that. We are going to see an increase in costs, a major increase in costs and a major decrease in services. Now, talk about totally backwards and these are major, major services. Mental health is a huge problem and we need to combat that. Um, that's all I have for.
I had a question for you, Commissioner Wilson. I do read through these, uh, committee meeting minutes. I enjoy them. On the opioid settlement, uh, advisory committee, where a, the Triumph For Hope Recovery Residential, what is that and where is that?
So that, uh.
Triumph and Hope Recovery Residential, a bid, there were seven hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred.
That's a, that's an Ogumah County resident. Um, I can't remember her name off the top of my head right now. But that's a new entity. I believe she probably has an LLC set up and that would be a complete new entity, uh, you know, a housing. She had to have the, you know, the proper people to, to run the housing in order for people to live there and to be. Um, you know, medicated daily and everything else. So that, that was a big request I did see and. We're excited about that meeting in September because everyone's going to have their chance to talk to us and. And plead their case of why we should try to support them.
Out of all of them that I looked at, I just had no idea what that, what that was.
It'd be a, be a housing here in Ogumah County for people with opioid, uh, major opioid issues.
Okay.
Very much so.
Yes, go ahead.
For transit committee and maybe Tony to, uh, the bus wash station, the new one, is it all functional?
They still haven't purchased the power washer yet. So Tony, go ahead. Want to go ahead and jump in?
So, um, we have a wash bot. Um, it's a. Uh, self-driven wash bot, if you would, that goes around our buses and then our drivers utilize that. We have a pressure washer down in our main facility or, or, or main bus garage. Um, that the drivers still utilize, but we're looking at, just trying to get a, a smaller portable one for the bus garage. But other than that, it is, it is functional. We have everything in there. It's heated the whole nine, so.
It's automatic. I mean, you just hit a button, this thing goes around washing the bus.
Well, I, I guess it's self-driven, I guess, um. Well, it, it's operated, you know, so a driver will, will. Grab the handles and push and all that. It's pretty nifty.
Can we, can we wash other vehicles?
Uh, I mean, it's for.
Cars, pickup trucks.
What, what are you?
Vehicles, county-owned vehicles. Can, can it be, can, can, can it wash the pickup truck, the owned by the, by the transit?
Yes, yes, it can.
And if you had a car that was owned by the transit, could it wash that?
Definitely.
Well, then. Let's, uh, let's, let's put this on the, on the committee as a whole. Let's take a look at watching our county-owned vehicles down there. If, if there's got to be some cross-department billing, I don't care, but.
When's your guys' next transit meeting?
Uh, it'll be the third Thursday in September, uh, ten AM at the airport.
Okay. So then we already have quite a bit on the next committee of the whole. So why don't you guys plan on talking about it at the transit committee level and then. You can report back to us and we can put it on the next committee of the whole.
Yeah, I think it's.
I'd like that, take it to them first to make sure that, and then bring it to us. I agree with you.
Yeah, that's.
I, I would like their approval and.
Well, we, we talked about a long way back when Ray was first talking about an auto wash, you know? We talked about it long before Tony was here. And, you know, we approved a couple of years ago to have let the airsoft use, use the west end deer, uh, west end, uh. Auto wash.
Yeah.
But if, if this thing is able to, and like I say, if it means cross billing.
I haven't seen.
I don't have.
Wash receipts and claims. Since I've been doing them for quite a few months, now that that's mentioned. I, I, I had in the past and I haven't recently.
Make comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. Definitely look into it. Well, Tim will make sure it's on the agenda for, uh, our meeting in September.
I attended the MTA. Uh, thank Mills Township for putting on the meeting, uh, putting on, or I should say putting, uh. The location of the meeting. Then they also put on an excellent, excellent meal. It was very good. So. I also did claims. That was it for me. Nine to one, I was working out at the fair, so I wasn't even unable to attend that. And then Michigan Works, there's no, um. Business this upcoming Friday, so we do not have a meeting and then my township start again next week. So. That's it for me. General public comment. Any general public comment in the room? Any general public comment on the phone? Any, any general public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Mayhew, support.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott, all in favor? Most, most, the motion is.